Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our November 14th Federal City Council meeting to order. Welcome all of you who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remote. At this time, we ask that Pastor Wilbur Blandon Jr. from Antioch Bible Fellowship Church would come to the podium if he would give us our invocation. Ask that all would please stand for the invocation. Immediately following, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, how are you?
How are you, Doc? Good, Mayor. It's so good to see you, the city council today, the city officials, as well as the concerned citizens that are here in Fayetteville and those that are watching online. I would like us to bow our heads at this moment. Father, in the name of Jesus, we appreciate the opportunity to invite you in this meeting tonight. We ask for your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, and the spirit of unity to give us clarity for the direction of this city. Let every discussion be made with understanding. May we hear one another, and God may these leaders here lead us to the next steps for this community. God, we honor you that we can look to you at this moment, for we are in difficult and challenging times. The Lord, you have left us here to face every challenge. We appreciate your goodness and your mercy to every one of us tonight, as we honor you in this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
If you could, tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry.
Yes, sir. I am Wilbur Blandon Jr. I am here in Fayetteville by way of the military. I've been in Fayetteville for over 34 years now. Been pastoring at Antioch Bible Fellowship Ministry at 6829 Field Yar Road outside of the Fort Bragg Gate off of Yakkin Road for the last 28 years. We are a community-based ministry that appreciates the city, the opportunity to serve it, and to connect people together so that we can serve God and make a difference in this community. I am also the Director of Life and Focus Empowerment Network Incorporated. This is a faith-based ministry that we started about 16 years ago, and I've been serving the community and teaching life skills education programs such as anger management, parenting skills, couples counseling, and several other areas of impact. I am honored to be here tonight. I have known you for many, many years. We have done many things together, and I am honored to meet all of the city council people here, some I don't know and look forward to meeting, but I thank you for the opportunity to be here and to share with our community.
Thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome.
Counselors, we move to our announcements. Go to Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to recognize our manager, his staff, the city attorney, her staff, the clerk's office. On October 28th, Councilmember Benevente and myself had the privilege of attending UNC School of Government. The topic for the day in those seminars and those classes were about citizen advisory boards and commissions, and they went through different topics during the day of best practices, and every single best practice that they mentioned and we talked about, we were already doing here in Fayetteville. So while we're sometimes quick to point out some shortcomings with staff, I would like to give them the recognition for a job well done. So, Mr. Manager, Ms. Attorney, Ms. Clerk, and all Board and Commission liaisons, thank you for a job well done and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank Councilmember Honduras. At this time, we'll ask that Ms. Debbie Brown of the Continuum of Care, as well as Ms. Natania Hassel from the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing, if they could come to the podium. Counsel, I've asked Ms. Brown and Ms. Hassel, who is representing Ms. Dawn Weeks from the Housing Authority, to come. We had some things in our community as we worked through connecting some of our citizens to resources. Found out a few weeks ago during a discussion that we had been awarded some emergency shelter vouchers that really wasn't aware of, so I've asked Ms. Brown and Ms. Hassel to kind of brief us a little bit on that. So I guess we'll start with you, Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Hassel.
Thank you. Again, my name is Debbie Brown. I'm Chair of the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Continuum of Care on Homelessness. The Fayetteville-Cumberland County Continuum Care on Homelessness, or the COC, serves only the geographic area of Cumberland County. A continuum of care is a regional or local planning body that coordinates care through available resources within the community. This coordination of services is accomplished through partnerships with all willing and able care servicing groups within the COCs service area, which includes over 50 agencies as members of our COC. One example of that partnership was with the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority. This partnership centers around the Emergency Housing Voucher Program issued by HUD. HUD has provided housing choice vouchers to local PHAs in order to assist individuals and families who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking, or were recently homeless or have a high risk of housing instability. HUD issued 33 emergency housing vouchers to FMHA in November of '21. Through a HUD-required MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, the work to issue and utilize these 33 vouchers is processed through the collaborative work of the COC and the FMHA. The COC did decree that targeted population for those 33 vouchers would be those considered chronically homeless or those with the highest risk of being homeless. FMHA and COC entered into the MOU in June of 2021. It must be understood that all human beings are given freedom of choice. The emergency housing voucher may be offered to a homeless friend, but it is solely up to them to accept that voucher and to accept the location in which the voucher may be utilized. So as of today, unless something has changed since noon, and I don't think that we've seen anything, there were 22 vouchers that have been issued and utilized, meaning those are leased. There are four that are being processed for leasing, and then there are seven vouchers that have been issued, but those recipients are searching for housing as of this time. This means that all 33 emergency housing vouchers have been issued. Additional referrals will be sent to FMHA in case an additional vouchers are issued by HUD to our local housing authority.
Thank you. She summed it up?
Yeah, she summed it up everywhere.
So, did have a question, Ms. Brown. So, the voucher, what does it do? Is it a length of time that HUD pays rent? Tell us a little bit about what it does.
The Housing Choice Voucher is a rental assistance program that helps families, once they find a unit, assist with their rent, and they have to find a unit within our guidelines.
All right. Counsel, any other questions, comments? Councilmember Ingram.
So, I think you said something that stood out to me the most is if they find a unit.
Correct.
Thank you. I'll address it later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember McNair. Can you turn your mic on?
Okay, sorry. You mentioned there are guidelines. Can you go over some of those guidelines for me, please?
Well, the unit first and foremost has to be affordable for the family based upon the calculation that HUD has given us, as well as pass inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
So those vouchers are used, can be used anywhere since it's from a federal agency? How does that work?
Yes. They can be used within Cumberland County. They can also take the report outside of the jurisdiction of Cumberland County.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Good luck. I know I had talked to Ms. Weeks about possible applying to HUD for additional vouchers.
Yes. Once we finally get all of these utilized, we will look at requesting more.
Thank you. All right. Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, I'm sorry, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's good to see you, Ms. Brown, and thank you both for all the work that you do for our community. My question is, as it relates to finding housing, is there an organization or someone that assists them with locating, or is that up to them to find an actual location to stay?
We have individuals throughout our agencies that do assist in that. Currently, we have Cumberland Health Net has a housing navigator that works with the coordinated entry that is working with FMHA through these, and they are helping those individuals seek housing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
Good work. All right. Move to announcements. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements. The first one is short and brief, but the second one, I'd just like some patience as I try my best to articulate. So for the first one, I would like to congratulate our Fayetteville State Bronco football team, as they are the, once again, new CIA 2022 football champions. So I really want to congratulate them. CIAA, thank you. I want to congratulate them. They had a welcome home celebration for them yesterday, and I really think Fayetteville State is making a huge impact on our community, on our children, and we must continue to uplift them, especially as they are our city's HBCU. Thank you. For the second announcement, I recognize that there are many people in this audience tonight here to celebrate many things or voice their concerns about some things. As we just heard from Housing Authority, mostly related to homelessness, and I've shared these thoughts with the council as well, as it relates to homeless, the city of Fayetteville, we are mandated to do certain things, and we get dollars to do certain things. We are putting forth a day center, and that came by the effort of being inundated by, impacted by Hurricane Matthew, which we were able to get a grant that said, okay, in an emergency effort, we can operate an emergency shelter. As I look in this room and see how full it is, and I look at the public forum and see that individuals are signed up to speak about homelessness, and I know what for, and I don't disagree that you should not be here. I do think you should be here voicing your concerns. I do want to point out that our Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, which they just had a reelection, they are mandated for public health, which homelessness also falls under that. So while we at the city of Fayetteville, we stretch our dollars to try and figure out how we can best support and help our community, I would just ask that you, as a community, as citizens that come in here and express your civic duty, to do the same with our county commissioners, because you also check the box to vote for them as well. Their next meeting is November 21st at the Cumberland County Courthouse in Room 118. If you want me to go with you, I'll go with you, but I would at least want us to make sure that we are holding everyone accountable in this fight so that we can continue to move this city and county forward, especially as it relates to our unhoused community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. At this time, we would ask, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the first time in nine years, I'm going to be able to have somebody on the diocese with me to celebrate this. Councilmember Honduras and I, and Mrs. Soppis in the back there with PWC, our church is putting on our 62, 62nd Annual Spaghetti Dinner, 63, I apologize, spaghetti dinner on 614 Oak Ridge Avenue. That is St. Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church, where we will have our pastries and our spaghetti. And a fun fact, I should have known it was 63 years ago, because my parents met on a blind date at the first Greek spaghetti dinner 63 years ago.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Oh, I'm sorry. It is November 16th, Wednesday. It is carryout only if you call in. This year, we are trying to be DoorDash, and we will deliver if you have over 10 orders. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. the Lumbee Tribe Chairman, Mr. Lowry, and also Mr. Ricky Burnett from the Tribal Council Representative of District 13, and Mr. Greg Richardson, Executive Director of North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, if you can meet me at the podium. Gentlemen.
Welcome all in one. Mr. Mayor, if you will present the proclamation, and I'll read it. And it states, "Whereas Native American Heritage Month is observed by acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans long before the formation of the United States, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Herbert Walker Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as Native National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas we are aware of the historical importance of local and national tribes, and the way Native Americans continue to enrich our heritage and add to all aspects of our society by sharing their customs and traditions, and whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the strength and resilience of the Native American people and honor the tribal nations that continue to thrive today and recognizes their contributions historically. And whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the cultural, political, and social ways in which Native Americans contribute to this diverse community and our society in general, and now therefore Mitch Colvin, Mayor, City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. In the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, a time to celebrate the rich cultures of Native American people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native Americans face historically and present, and recognize their continued significance in our community. And witnessware of Mayor Mitch Colvin here unto sets his hand and calls the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 14th day of November 2022. Please join me in recognizing the Native American Month."
Mr. Mayor, would we like to get everybody around the audience in the picture?
Get these and then get more.
All right. Let this slide for me.
Three, two, one.
Larry's gonna need to, he's gonna need to get the chair. This needs to go viral. Everybody needs to share this now.
All right.
We need to.
Mark it out here.
Three, two, one.
Three, two, one, we're still here.
That's right. We're not going anywhere.
We're not going anywhere.
That's right.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Could we have Chairman of the Commission of Indian Affairs and the Chairman of Lumbee Tribe just to make a brief comment?
Absolutely.
I made just a couple notes real quick.
Can I use them?
Yes, sir, you may. On behalf of the Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina and all 65,000 of our members, on behalf of Speaker Ricky Burnett, who is, as you just heard, is the Chairman of the Indian Affairs Committee as well, on behalf of our Tribal Council members, who there are plenty here today, on behalf of Speaker Ricky, who's the Councilmember from Cumberland County as well, on behalf of the Tribal Administration that's here, on behalf of all the other Native American tribes that are represented here in the city of Lumpton and recognized here tonight, on behalf of, where did I say? I'm sorry. Fayetteville. On behalf of Fayetteville, and on behalf of the members of the Cumberland County Culture Class that meets every Thursday up here, I just want to tell you, thank you. I want to tell the council, Town Council, thank you. The city administration, thank you. As you can see and as you can heard, we are still here, and most of the people that are standing right here today are your constituents. They live right here in the city of Fayetteville. So we didn't bring anybody from other parts. These are your constituents, and we did that purposefully so that you guys would know that when you're representing the city of Fayetteville, when you're out and about talking about the county of Cumberland, I want you to make sure that you realize and recognize the Native American people that are here and that are still here today and that make a continuous impact for your city and your county each and every day. Thank you all.
Let me say it is truly an honor to be here tonight and to look around and see my people, and letting you know that we are still here, that we stand. And what an honor, Mr. Mayor, for you to present this to us. It means a lot. But we are. We're still here. We're doing great things as a tribe, as Native Americans. I mean, we've got doctors, we've got lawyers, we've got, you know, whatever you name, we're here. And we just want people to know that we are, we are, we are Americans also, but we are the Native of people. We are indigenous people. We love our people, and thank God, when we see these young people right here, man, what a blessing to see them be able to be here with us tonight. And then time comes that they will be here before. And my thing is that I'm looking that you're going to have some Native Americans sitting on your city council one day. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. I think it's an honor for me to be standing here. I go further back up the Native American Indian than anybody here I get. And I'm the chief of the tribe in Sampson County, but I have a daughter and granddaughter here, so I'm here backing in. And I'm just glad to see what's going on with our, with our young generation. They're going on, and we're going to be here a while. You know, when I see, that's my granddaughter right there. She's really interested in it. So I don't like to talk like this, but one day, you know, when I'm gone, it'll still be going on, you know? And so I'm just proud of what's going on, Native Americans. I used to run around Fayetteville a lot, a lot of the Indian guys and all, and they're all gone. Ain't many left. And there was some hard work done to get us where we at now. And I'm just proud and glad. I just don't hardly know the word that expresses the way I feel from what I see happening with our Native American Indians. And I see none Native American Indians opening the doors for us, you know? So it's up to us to just go forward and, you know, and do things for ourselves. Thank you.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is indeed a historic moment in time, in history, to have this many American Indian people come together in your city. And so we're looking forward to great things down the road. And on behalf of the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, I want to just say that we have the largest American Indian population east of the Mississippi, right here in North Carolina. And right here in Cumberland County, you have the largest urban Indian population of any county or any city here in North Carolina. So on behalf of the eight state-recognized tribes that we have here in our state, and our four urban associations, and the membership of our North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, which you have two members on our commission from right here in Cumberland County. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for what you've done. You've made history right here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could I, sir, you know, as a preacher, so, you know, they never get finished. Thank you. But I do, I want to recognize Chris Lowry and Andy Brayboy, because they took the initiative. I tell you what, I applaud them. And Ms. Scott?
David.
David. Where's David? And David. I tell you what, you've got some great people on your team and working with you. So let me say, we applaud you and we thank you. Alex Baker. Yeah, there's Alex. I told you, we moving in. We're coming in.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, appreciate you.
I'm Brad. I'm from where you live.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Good job. Appreciate y'all. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Brad, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Get him a minute to clear.
Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, you had something?
Um, yes, I also did want to mention that the Steel here, Steel Native American Art Exhibit runs to November 27. That's at the art center.
All right, council, as we moving right along, I'll go to the city manager's report. Mr. Hewitt, non given. All right, council, let's go to item 6.0 and look for approval of the agenda. We'll go to iPads. Okay, of course, all right, all right. Is motion by councilmember Hare to approve the agenda is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Benevente. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, council, just show of hands. Those in favor? All right, councilmember Ingram, you voting to approve the agenda? Okay. You're voting in, in oppose or you approve?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Unanimous, Madam Clerk, item 7.0, consent. And is there a motion, councilmember Hondros? Motion to approve the consent. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Jensen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, this motion is to approve the consent. Those in favor, approval? All right, those oppose? All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries nine to one voting in opposition. Councilmember Ingram. Item 8.0 is the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on the items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, I ask that you please reserve your comments until that portion of the meeting. So when your name is called by the city clerk, asks that you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Then you'll be notified when it's time to speak. At 30 seconds, you'll have a warning, and at the conclusion of your time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time beyond 30 minutes. So Madam Clerk, how many speakers?
Sir, we have 19 speakers.
Okay, all right, and we'll do the best we can to get all 19 in, but we will have a 30-minute time limit. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Rick Ivansky.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, and members of the Fayetteville City Council. My name is Rick Ivansky, and my granddaughter is Jada Johnson, of who I will speak of today. I live at 2308 Colgate Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 23804. This is my third time at the mic asking for accountability, transparency, and reform. I think reform is on a good track based on what I saw last week. I think you guys are working on the Durham model, and I think that would be the way to go, and I want to say thank you to the entire council for your leadership in moving in that direction. Thank you for all of, all of those that have been victims in the past of mental health. I appreciate it, and I know Jada's thanking you too. Tonight, though, I want to speak of, excuse me, accountability, accountability. The SBI has completed their investigation and turned it over to the NC Special Prosecutor's Office for determination. In 2021, Governor Cooper said, "This position is consistent with the change in law recommended by the North Carolina Task Force for Racial Equity and Criminal Justice", which calls for a special prosecutor in police shootings. We also have the autopsy and the medical examiner's report that was released last week. In the autopsy, I counted 11 penetrating wounds on Jada alone out of total of 17 rendered to her head and body. When the medical examiner arrived at the house to do his duty, he found someone had handcuffed her postmortem, and he said in his report that she was still that way when she got to the morgue. I apologize for putting you through this. You should be sickened by this. Not just the horror of it, but the injustice that is in your mind's eye. We, the people of this city, we can't allow this. We cannot allow it to stand. We, we cannot accept that no wrong was done here. We can only accept accountability, and we must accept civilian oversight of the police. It is time. We must get it. The rest of the nation is going toward that. Why not here? Why not? I ask you, all of you with good conscience, let's get someone else to police the police. They can't police themselves. Justice for Jada Johnson. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Ms. Michelle Walls. Michelle Walls. Mr. Alex Rodriguez.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Council, representatives of the law enforcement community. Really simple. It was really minimal compared to Mr. Ivansky. Why, one of the big issues, I ran for city council, one of the big issues was, again, transparency. I, when I ask for information from the city, I keep getting the Heisman, or in other words, I keep getting ignored for public information that should be public information according to the Freedom of Information Act. Quarterly police reports are usually not released here at City Hall until about a month and a half after the quarter has ended. I've submitted Freedom of Information Acts and information requests immediately after each quarter has been, has ended. So there should be no changes that need to be made, no new information, but I keep getting rejected or I keep getting ignored in request to that information. Why is that? Considering the quarter has already ended, we're November 14, and this third quarter still has not been released. So what is it that the city is withholding? It's public information. Why can't I get it? Why do I need to keep badgering the police department as well as my representatives for information that I should have? Again, it shouldn't be an issue. I shouldn't have to pull teeth to get public information. I can go to the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and get the same information from the county within minutes. Hope Mills Police Department gave me the same information within hours. So why is it that I have to wait a month and a half or even longer to get that crime stat information from the city of Fayetteville? Is it intentional or is it incompetence? Thank you.
Ms. Malloy, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. How are y'all tonight? I want to first thank councilmembers Ingram, Banks, McLaughlin, Benevente, McNair, and Hondros for putting your community first and voting for independent oversight. So tonight, I'm speaking to Mayor Colvin, councilmembers Dawkins, Jensen, Hare, and Thompson. So a lot of you know that in the community, my job is addressing health disparities for Black mothers and Black babies, and that's because our mothers and babies here in Cumberland County are dying three times more than our white counterparts. With that, I have also been, I'm a part of a project that has been funded $10 million to address doctors across the state so that even though they go into this feeling that they do no harm, they are acknowledging that harm is being done, and so not only are they allowing systemic racism to be addressed, but they're letting, they're letting community members, community-based doulas, to go into their clinics and do oversight over them to address what they have not been able to solve. Also, some of you may know that for 23 years, I've homeschooled my kids, and about 20-something years ago, my son, he was five years old, and it was one of those days where, you know, things were, you know, had many things to do, and I was asking him, he was not doing what I was, what he was told, and I said, "Son," rhetorically, I said, "Son, how many times do I have to tell you not to do whatever?" Well, he answered me back, and he said, "Five times, Mommy. I need five times." So what I'm coming to you tonight is asking, how many more Adrian Roberts, Mr. McNair, Jason Walkers, Jada Johnsons, and Jelena Dunlap's do you all need before you to choose to do what's right? Just tell us how many times. If a five-year-old can tell us how many times, I'm sure you can tell us. How many times do we need to keep coming up here and, and asking you to give us independent oversight? If our doctors across this state can do that to address the deaths that are happening even though they feel they're doing no harm, we can ask that of you to request that of our police department. So again, I implore you to ask yourself, how many times do you need to hear us to come before you before you choose to do the right thing? Because the community that you vow that you love and serve, they need you to do the right thing, and we're expecting that. And I'm, I'm very disappointed in the ones that I named, but especially Mayor Colvin, Mr. Hare, and also Mr. Thompson. And you know why? I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. John Caldwell. Mr. John Caldwell. Mr. Sean McMillan.
Ms. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening, Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Range Drive. Since Fayetteville's notorious driving while black controversy in 2012, there have been numerous calls for Fayetteville City Council to establish independent oversight. In 2014, under pressure from the Police Benevolence Association, Association of PBA, this council folded and seemingly lost the political will to establish oversight. Some of you were here then. In July 2020, when activists like myself proposed establishment of a civilian police oversight authority staffed with full-time oversight practitioners, the council again failed, with councilmember Banks McLaughlin being the lone yes vote against non-protectors of the status quo. I urge every Fayetteville resident to go to YouTube and watch last week's working session meeting, starting at about the 2 hour and 33 minute mark. In what was arguably the most concrete attempt in eight years to establish an independent oversight body, the council was on the brink of establishing an office of public safety, which was not only house full-time oversight practitioners, but could also hold needed professional mental health response capabilities. The council failed again, inexplicably deadlocking with the vote of 5-5. I'm asking, after losing Najee Higgins, Adrian Roberts, Shakur McNair, Lawrence Graham, Justin Lifce, Trevor Smotherman, Jason Walker, Jada Johnson, Joshua Oxendine, this city can no longer afford to kick the proverbial can down the road. How many more people have to die? How many more unheard allegations of excessive force and misconduct, such as the case of Jelena Dunlap Banks, Rashad Everett, and Gerard Atkinson? We must demand independent oversight now. Tonight, we're calling five in question. They are Mayor Colvin, councilmembers Dawkins, Hare, Jensen, and Thompson, to vote yes on establishing an office of public safety. We also, I'm gonna do something I don't usually do, but I'm also calling on city manager Doug Hewitt to act aggressively in building a safe, a public safety infrastructure that meets the demands of the city. Get your heads out of the sand. Please follow the example of Greensboro, which recently promoted former GC Jack Coordinator to lead their office of public safety. Please do everything in your power to create systemic change in the horribly broken system that you in charge with, you're charged with managing, and that you recently petitioned voters for permission to manage. The FPD and all of its lives, all of its broken lives, is your responsibility to fix. All of us or none of us.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Dimitri Murphy. Ms. Dimitri, Dimitria, I apologize, Murphy. Mr. Chilenko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, good evening.
Counsel, citizens of Fayetteville, I come before you with my heart heavy. I'm not even going to reiterate what the three speakers before me have spoke upon. They did it very well. I'm coming to you not as a member of an organization, but as a Black citizen, a Black father, a parent. We have a crisis in Fayetteville, and it hasn't even gotten really cold yet, and we need to address it. It's not a matter of funding, it's a, it's a matter of someone taking the initiative and address it. The homeless situation in Fayetteville has grown by leaps and bounds. At least 80% of the people in this room probably have some form of religion, whether it be Christianity, Islam, Buddhism, or wherever the case may be. Every one of those religions I just named, every religion that I know of speaks of humanity. So we must do the humanity thing and do right by these citizens. There's a surplus of funds in the city and in the county, in the parking recreation bonds, Ms. Jensen, I know you're in charge of that, there's a surplus of funds. We shouldn't be building stadiums and wrecks with the plight of individuals on the street and to put a human face on it. Once upon a time, when I was a teenager, I was incarcerated with a young man we call pork and bean. You know why we call him pork and bean? He got three years for stealing three cans of pork and beans. He was in prison for stealing three cans of pork and beans. It messed with him so much mentally that he didn't just do three years. He ended up doing about eight because he stabbed some people because it messed with his mentality. These citizens, whether they have drug abuse issues, whether they have mental health issues, whatever the issue may be, they're citizens right within the confines of Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville that will volunteer their time to assist these citizens. You have the land, the city land, the county has land, Habitat of Humanity, I haven't seen them build a house in six hours. Six hours. Six hours. Something, the groundwork and the foundation needs to be taken care of now, before the peak of holiday season. That's what I seek to speak upon today. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst.
Ms. Sherri McNeil. Ms. Sherri McNeil.
Good evening, Ms. McNeil.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor Colvin, councilmembers. What I'm going to speak upon today might seem trivial compared to those who came before me, but it's a real problem, a real issue for the people in our community. I reside at 720 Eccles Drive, and this has been my family home for over 60 years. We have had water saturation and drainage problems in this area since I've been a little girl, and I'm 67. In the early years, we had a pond in our backyard with the cute little arch fence that went across. It looked good for landscaping, but we found out that it was a hazard when it rained and started noticing black water moccasins swimming on the carport and inside our laundry room. My dad had a company fill it in with dirt. Just like many of my neighbors in Eccles Park, my family has spent and continue to spend their personal money, labor, and time trying to resolve the problems with no long-term results. We've installed sump pumps, French drains, and additionally, I have replaced my cement carport three times because my neighbor's sump pump is constantly pumping water into my yard and driveway. A request was made by one of my neighbors to see the land survey, a property report used when the neighborhood was established. The person was told that they could not locate it. We've had numerous meetings during our block meetings on monthly with people with mold growing up their walls, walls falling in, problems more severe than mine. I feel this issue needs to be looked at. My mom recently died, and I moved back in the home, and we're treated differently in that black neighborhood than when I lived over off in Haymount. I am requesting today that a survey is done on that property to see about the drainage there. But there's, I feel that community was built on a lake because when we moved in our home, we sure had a little pond in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hewitt, can someone, someone from Public Services take a look at, take a look at that resident, see if that's a drainage qualifier? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Mr. Cardona, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm so glad to see you guys again, back in your seats where you've been elected to be in, not to be thrown out. I present to you Mr. and Mrs. Buller.
Sir?
Now, just, I'm just presenting, I'm just showing them to you, okay, so you recognize who they are. They've been dealing with a problem for over 20 years. A problem which is called a sinkhole. It's located on the Old American Freeway, just before you get off the Santa Fe Drive. They have been trying to find a solution to the problem, which is not their problem. It's a problem that's been caused by just normal hurricanes, drainage, and everything else. The city and the state have this problem because they did not did this properly or they did not install this highway when it was installed properly. And if, an article was written already, members had been notified about it, and the, the problem continues to go and to go and go and go. These people have been living in that area before any of us were born, probably, most of us. These individuals have paid more taxes than you will ever pay in your whole lifetime. They need to be helped. How would you like to have a problem in your head and keep some banging you every day, every day, every day for 10, 20 years? And nobody can help it. No aspirin can help it. No motor can help it. But we do have $98 million in the new bond issue that was just approved, and congratulations to the lady. She did a super job. What she tried to do, I tried to undo, okay? Because I believe that PWC could take care of this problem and could take care of the $98 million by just writing off a check. PWC, who happens to be our company, owned and operated by the city officials. I don't know if you remember, guys, remember, I'm the guy that came here and talked to you about problems with the polluted water, problems with mental issues, problem with no sidewalks? And we're talking about over 21 years I've been coming in here. And not just as recently, guess what happened? We still got the same problems. All the priorities took place of the things that we need to do and continue to do and continue to leave it behind because some issue, a $6.6 million issue, might just come up, and we're gonna build something that nobody in this town asked for. Sorry, guys, this lady and this gentleman needs, just like the ladies talked about her problem with her, with her property that was built in a swamp, probably, they need your help. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. William Warren.
Mr. Warren, good evening, sir.
My name is William Warren. I reside at 601 McLamb Drive. And my issue is also about drainage in Eccles Park area. I live on the corner of McLamb and Lake Avenue. The drainage is very bad over there. And every time that it rains, as I have on these photos here, my whole backyard is flooded. Every single time, it's just disastrous, you know? And I'm here seeking help to try to, as the young lady says, speak on getting something done about it because I can't even go in my backyard when it starts to rain. And I just would like to have something done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We're going to, staff is sending some, some engineers over there to kind of assess what's going on. Thank you.
And Mr. Warren, what was that intersection again, please?
Lake Avenue and McLamb Drive.
Mr. Gary Gerald. Mr. Gary Gerald. Mr. Raheem Harris.
Good evening, sir.
I'm new to Fayetteville, but since I got to Fayetteville, I have family that's here. This system is screwed up, y'all. Y'all system is messed up. It is. It is. Y'all wished on the voice. I am the voice. I ain't trying to be mean. Everybody in their head, they be hearing the voice, they be hollering, hollering, they had help, but I be hollering for help, but I'm here to help y'all. I'm more than just a voice. I'm a person, has many gifts. There's gifts that scare me sometimes. I don't want nobody to get scared. Sometimes they see the spirits. I don't. I walk with the spirits. And honestly, after this, we could go to the White House, and I bet you I'll see something magical. Nah, 'cause the White House, they gonna have to let me stay, and my grandfather said that. Yeah, for real. He's in the Air Force. Like, just, y'all, me, Raheem, I'm not scared. It's, it's, it's life. Like, for real. Yeah, I can. I can, I tell the world to. I'm ready, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Matthew Jones.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm really not sure if the city of Fayetteville understands that homeless people are human beings. I really, I really don't. I really don't. I really don't. I was born in Fayetteville. I was raised in Fayetteville. I did a little research on the whole city council, plus you, Mr. Colvin, and seven out of 10 of y'all, on your bio, mentioned something about you're a member of a church or you're a member of Greek Orthodox Church, Methodist, you know, might be Pentecostal. I know it's not you, so, I know it's not you. I know it's not Mr. Colvin either. Not you. Yeah, but the other ones, okay? So let's, let's look at this. Proverbs 29:7. "The righteous care about justice for the poor, but wicked have no such concern." Okay? Remember, 70% of y'all claim, you know, to study the same book that I do, except for I decided to walk and let Jesus, you know, walk within me. And I, and I don't just sit on my wallet, or, sorry, our wallet. Okay? Proverbs 21:13. "Whoever shuts their ears to the cry of the poor will also cry and not be answered." Proverbs is a good book. If, if the seven out of 10 of y'all have not read through it, I suggest it's a good book. Proverbs 22:9. "The generous will themselves be blessed, for they share their food with the poor." You're trying to move my friends all around the city of Fayetteville, but you're not telling them where to go, 'cause you got nowhere for them to go. Okay? I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually starting a nonprofit to try and push them in the right direction. Because you're saying, "Oh, we don't like the way you look sitting in front of our library." That's our library, and I think they're just fine over there. Matthew 25:40. "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers of mine, you did for me." So when you turn your back to us or to the homeless, you're turning your back on Christ. So if you claim to be a believer, then do something about the homelessness problem. Because I'm telling you, Fayetteville Urban Ministries, Agape Pregnancy Center, all of these places, they're not city of Fayetteville. People in the community want to see the change. That's why they're developing it themselves. You guys are just sitting on the wallet of our money. I don't want, I, I do not, I mean, how much money? And I know this is my time, so you're not gonna answer it, but how much money do we spend on this baseball stadium? That's not gonna get you good graces in heaven, but taking care of our community will.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Margie Whitehead. Ms...
Yeah, yeah. Does he have the information on?
As Ms. Whitehead is coming up, city manager, I understand that there's supposed to be a informational session for folks who want to start nonprofits to support the homeless. Do you have that quick comment you can make about that? Just so people who wanna, we love the passion. We don't want to waste it.
Or could we do that after the public forum?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get Ms. Collins to give us a brief. Yes, ma'am. She, Ms. Whitehead signed up. Hey, good evening, Ms. Whitehead.
Good evening, Council. I'm speaking about the water problem at Eccles Park. We do have a problem because the neighborhood was actually built on a, on a landfill. It used to be Dawson's Pond. And it was a landfill. And now that we're getting a lot of underground streams, springs are coming up. And so, that's where a lot of the water is coming from. And I don't know how you will address it, but it has to be addressed because there's mold in most of the homes. And my house is shifting. When the storm came, the first hurricane that came, it got soft. And my sunroom is kinda tilted. It's kinda sinking down. And I don't know when I'm gonna wake up and the whole backyard of my house be down in the pond. But it's a landfill. And I do wanna thank Councilman Mario. The best Councilman. He's just great. He's great. When I addressed the problem with him, he was right on it. I had a tree that fell in the ditch, a stream that goes past my house. Well, the city said, "It's your problem." But when I got ready to do something about it, they said I couldn't because it belonged to the environment. So every time something happens in a ditch, it's my problem. It's my property. So if you'd kinda readdress that, I appreciate it. And thank you, and thank you, Councilman Mario.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Mr. Hewitt, I mean, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Now, we have one minute left for the public forum. Our final speaker is Ms. Lindsay Wofford.
Hey, good evening, Ms. Wofford.
Good evening, Council. So as we, I'm Lindsay Wofford with SSWISH, for those of you that I haven't met yet. As we served breakfast this morning to the homeless community, city work trucks, dump trucks, and police cars lined the street next to us preparing to enforce the no camping ordinance. Mr. Redding with the city manager's office arrived, and after discussion with city employees, they decided their current plan of action would not suffice, and everyone left to discuss a Plan B. A short time later, multiple Fayetteville Police Department, or Police Department officers arrived and handed court summons to the homeless individuals on scene without saying a word. When I asked where I could take them, I was told just not city property, and every officer retreated to their patrol car and left. I called coordinated entry and was told there are no shelter beds available and no hotel vouchers. I called Salvation Army and Manic Church to confirm no beds were available and was told they even have waiting lists. I called the Fayetteville Police Department's homeless resource officer. She told me she unfortunately had no suggestion on where they can go. I called the head of the continuum of care. She had no vouchers or suggestions. I called Mr. Redding, whose job is homeless encampment policy development and implementation, and was told that Health Net had all the answers. So I walked my butt over to Health Net, and they were surprised to hear that they should have the answers. I called back Mr. Redding to ask again, where do I take them? His response was, "I don't have that answer." I said, "What happens if they're still here tomorrow?" His response was, "I don't have an answer for that." We recorded every single phone call that we made today. We spent seven hours, talked to over 40 organizations and city employees, and not one person could tell me where to take them or what happens if they're still there in the morning. They're signed up for all the programs, housing through Health Net, Health Net, and et cetera, and those applications are pending. So where do they go tonight, and what happens if they're still there in the morning? The ordinance is a joke. It says more about us as a city than it does about the homeless people that we are targeting. We will not be quiet about it. We will not go away. And if something doesn't change immediately, then the homeless population will not, not be the only people receiving court dates.
Madam Clerk? So we, we're at our 30-minute time, but there's one more speaker that's, Ms. Benay, Kathy, is she here?
We have two of the speakers, but we have surpassed the 30-minute limit.
Ms. Kathy, I don't see the second. Who's the, who's the second?
Sherman Topa.
All right. Ms. Benay?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I live in Eccles Park, where there's a lot of water damage, and it's causing a lot of mold. And the house where I'm living in, one of my floors is sloping, flanking to the side. I have been working with the city council, Mario, and Power Up to help my community. My problem is not as bad as others. There's some members in my community that have a sump pump under their house, and the only time that, and they have smell odor, and I smell odor from under my house because of water and mold. I have one neighbor, the only time that it's going to be, smells well, if it don't rain for four months. And the problem is, the mold is not good for anyone's health. We need help because we're all paying tax dollars. My parents and everybody's parents spent all their money and their careers to maintain these houses, and now these houses are about to float away. It is not fair for the community to let down these people who trust everybody voting to be let down and say, "We can't help you because it's private property." We gave you our money, our dedication, and our resources to help all of you in any way we can to help you. And we need to help our community and use that money to help property. All this damage, all this water debt for all these years need to be taken care of. We should not have to be worried about getting sick because of mold because it's our property. Please, please help my community. I have one neighbor, her house is almost coming apart. It's splitting. Her, she got splits all of her house. It's crumbling. And we can't fix the house because the water is the reason why her house is falling apart. And it's not fair that her children, her children paid for her house, and it's falling apart. It's not what they put her mother in, the house being full of mold and her health going bad. I hope you understand our conditions and help my neighbors as well as myself in Echoes Park. Thank you, and y'all be blessed.
Thank you. All right, last speaker.
The final speaker is Sherman Topa.
Evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak about the homeless. As you all well know, I live on the streets in front of the library. And some of you, I don't know, few of you, when they were before, used to call me the mayor of the homeless because I help out the homeless. I see how they are. I see what they need. And I tend to it. And like I said, a lot of organizations have tended to it too, but they're not there on the site. But I am also homeless. As of today, I got two notices, one for me and one for my son, saying that we're on city property. We are people too. And we have put in for apartments. We have put in for houses. We've put in for trailers. We've put in for everything. And when I first came to talk about many homes years ago, they told me that they were going to build a shelter where they're putting the community center now. It's a rock shop. But the first time they came, they told me the funding that they had from Hurricane Matthew was supposed to go to a homeless shelter to, for people that are on the streets. Well, somehow things got turned around, and they decided to make it a community center. Well, I mean, what about the people? They can't live in a community center. We need beds now. We don't need them next week. We need a place to live. I've been trying for years to get a place. Years. And it's not working. I've gone through COC. I've gone through all of them. I mean, right now, I'm in two places. And I believe somebody called and said they had vouchers. Well, they don't have a voucher for me. You've got to be in a place already to have a voucher. They help you pay the rent if you need help with the rent. No, I need a place to help to find the place to live so I can pay the rent because I have retirement. I am seventy-three years old. I'm disabled, and my son is disabled. And this is the way the city treats me? They give me a notice? Are you helping? No, you're hindering. Every one of you can be responsible to God for what you've done, to all the homeless people. And like he said, God is going to recognize each and every one of you. When you come, once you come to go, you're going to find out. Why, he's going to say, what have you done for me? And if you haven't done nothing for Him, you're not going to go see the Almighty, okay? I mean, I'm not judging you now, but I'm letting you know because of this here and what you, the way you're treating the homeless. We are people too. Homeless is not a three-letter word, okay? It is not a bad word. It's a situation we get in. People get in. And we don't want to be there. I don't want to be there. I've been trying to get out for years. You know, I have five dogs and my son, they are disabled dogs. They're dogs that have been registered in the state of North Carolina through vocational rehabilitation. I had a Congresswoman, Renee Elmers, help me to get them stated and stated for my son, who is nocturnal and has other issues too, has a high temper and all kinds of stuff. But the people you hire are the ones that have done this to me.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Madam Clerk?
We have no further speeches, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you. Thank you to all nineteen speakers tonight. Again, this is an opportunity where the public speaks to the city. So if we're not responding, it's not because we're not concerned. We are taking notes and asking the manager to follow up. We are working, the City Council is working, to do and bring resources into the homeless sector as we're doing with various programs. And we appreciate all of the work that everyone is doing, from Man of Church to all of the new nonprofits. We want to make sure that you get connected to the city so that we could be a partner in this. This is not something that is unique to our community. And this is not something that any of us can solve alone. And we are employing our other local government partner, the county commissioners, who also receive funding and dollars specifically for this to partner with us and partner with the agencies so that we can help our community. So thank you all for that. And Councilmember Ingram, real quick.
Thank you. I did have a clarifying question I needed to ask of the Kirk as it relates to our public information. When we receive the reports from our police department and our fire department, such as our quarterly crime stats, those are published within our agendas online at the day of or after they've been presented, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, thank you. And so, and I knew what the answer was because I went and I found it on our public website. And so I just wanted to make a note if our residents can find out when we're having a meeting. I'm sure enough they can find out how to find the agenda and review all items such as our crime stats. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Great. Council, moving on to item nine point zero one, public hearing on adoption of downtown district council. At this time, we will read the rules regarding the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is chosen, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then begin to address the council. At thirty seconds, you'll be notified that your time has almost expired. And at the end of your allotted time, you will be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we will have to follow the previously stated. Mr. Freeman?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council, Taurus Freeman, Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development. Tonight, I'm doing a presentation regarding the adoption of the Fayetteville Downtown Social District. As you all remember, on September sixth, at the work session, you all directed staff to work with the Cool Springs Downtown District to establish an ordinance for our social districts. Tonight, I have with me Bianca Shoneman, who is the president and CEO of the Cool Springs District. She will give you all a brief description, background regarding what a social district is, and I'll come back and do the ordinance.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bianca Shoneman. I work for the Cool Springs Downtown District. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. This is my second time being here. First time at public hearing tonight. A social district was a law that was created in 2021 by the North Carolina Retail Merchants Association, enacted by the governor in September of twenty-one. What the sort of spirit behind a social district is designed to do is to increase foot traffic in urban cores and to level the playing field between big-box retailers and independent retailers. We, as the downtown, really love this concept and have been working with city staff, downtown merchants and property owners over the course of the last year to bring it forward. So specifically, a social district is a defined area in which a person may consume alcoholic beverages sold by an ABC permit holder. This term does not include the ABC permittee's licenses premise or extended areas. What the House bill did not do was it didn't create a sort of broad, sweeping social district across the state, but it did allow municipalities and counties the ability to opt in if they want to. That's what we're here to do tonight, opt in. Several cities across the state of North Carolina, including many of our peer cities, Greensboro, Charlotte, Raleigh, Wilson, Kannapolis, Monroe, Greenville, North Carolina, have already enacted social districts. So we have some precedence on how these are operating across the state. A social district has some pretty clear rules that are set forth through the legislation. Specifically, we are here tonight to talk about the days and hours of operation. And we also have to include a clear statement and of what the social district is designed to do. Social districts are allowed to operate across the state between 7:00 AM and 2:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. This is something that we're recommending is that we operate seven days a week between 12:00 PM and 10:00 PM. If we wanted to go a little earlier because we have enacted the brunch bill on Sundays, we could. We're not asking for that. Also, we are required, under the statute, to work within businesses that are already permitted to sell alcoholic beverages. That's basically anybody that has an ABC permit. We also are required to identify businesses that opt in or opt out. So here's an example of the graphics that we will include, much like you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce decal on the exterior of a business that says alcohol is sold here, alcohol is welcomed here, not permitted here. Very clear, very clear branding. Cool Springs will print these for businesses that opt in, opt out, and participate. We also are required to have a specific cup that says specific things. This is an example of what that cup will look like. The cups must say, drink responsibly, be over twenty-one, and then identify where that particular beverage was purchased from, just in the case there's any incident, so it's traceable. If you come in to the social district, let's say you go to a gas station and you purchase a fortified beer or wine, and you walk in carrying a brown bag, that does not make you legal. And I just want to make that really clear. This is about going to an ABC permit holder in the urban core, walking into a retail shop, making a purchase, taking a stroll through our streets, and then throwing it appropriately away in the downtown district. This is our proposed map. What we've sought to do is include every ABC permit holder in the downtown district. That includes twenty-six businesses that are permitted. I hope you see the changes that we've made to this map. I think it looks contiguous, nice and straight, and much easier to walk. Here's a full listing of all those businesses that are permit holders in the downtown. This does not include retail establishments at this point. And then we are also included as a provision to provide signage. Since we are opting in for or proposing a pilot project for tonight, we're proposing these decals that would be featured on the boundaries of the downtown as stickers down. I've actually had one up outside my office for the last two weeks, just testing how it'll wear on the bricks. That's okay. Is it okay? Okay.
All right. Sorry about that.
Sorry. The Cool Springs Downtown District did conduct a survey a few months ago. We had nine hundred and twenty responses to that survey. Let me say that again. Nine hundred and twenty people responded to that survey. You can see the variety of respondents that we had. Most of those were just general constituents that come downtown, attend events. Of those, six hundred and sixty-three or seventy-two percent were in favor of the social district. And of those, over fifty percent wanted to see the social district operate over seven days a week as we are proposing tonight. So Taurus, if you'd like to step back up and walk us through that ordinance, that would be great.
Thank you very much. So with the ordinance, there are three different sections to it. One, there are three different requirements. It's the social district requirement, the ABC permittee requirement, as well as the patron requirement. For the social district, it must meet the following requirements under North Carolina General Statute. An alcohol beverage purchase for consumption in the social district must be consumed in the social district, be disposed before exiting the social district unless entering a business within the social district that allows alcohol beverages to be bought inside the business. ABC permittee requirement, a permittee located or selling alcoholic beverages within the social district must follow all the following requirements. Only sell or and serve alcoholic beverages on its licensed permit. Only sell alcoholic beverages for consumption in a container that meets all the following requirements. The container clearly identifies the permittee from which the alcohol beverage was purchased. The container clearly displays a logo for some other marks that is unique to the social district. The container is not comprised of glass, and it has the display, which is drink responsibly, be twenty-one. The container shall not hold more than sixteen fluid ounces. For patrons, possession and consumption, only alcohol beverages purchased from the location and the, can only be, alcohol beverages must only be designated in the social district containers and must be possessed and consumed during the days and hours set by the city. From here, we have an operation hour from 12:00 PM, noon, until 10:00 PM for two days, Friday and Saturday, or seven days. Now, the reason why there's a difference, we have two separate recommendations. We have one from Cool Springs, and we have one from city staff. This is a proposed social district map as Bianca went over before. And this is a timeline. Since we last met, staff has been working very diligently Since we last met, staff has been working very diligently in researching and working with Cool Springs to come up with a plan. This is the first of two meetings. The next meeting will be held on November 28th. We have the district map completed, the ordinance has been completed, a management and maintenance plan has been completed. We have currently, Cool Springs has ordered signage. However, we're waiting for the conclusion of you all's determination to move forward with that, but it should be ready by the time that the ordinance is in effect. The cups have been ordered. Registration with the ABC Commission will be done upon completion or upon approval by you all, the city council, and staff has been working with our marketing communications department regarding our website posting. Now we come down to our options and recommendations. One is approval of creation of a temporary downtown social district for a period of six months, from December 2022 to June 2023, to operate seven days a week from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. After three months, Cool Springs will present a progress report on the impact to the city council at the March 2023 work session. In June 2023, the action will be reintroduced to rescind the pilot, extend it for six months, or create an ordinance amendment for the social district. And now, there's just the slight variation between the Cool Springs recommendation, which is for seven days, and the staff recommendation, which is for two days. And your third option is to deny the request for a social district, or fourth, remand back to staff for additional information. Now, tonight, you all do not have to make a decision, but this is a public hearing. At the next meeting, you all can give staff direction, whether to approve or deny the request, or any of the other two options, and then we could possibly put it on consent agenda, or we could have another meeting in addition to this one. Are there any questions?
What we'll do is, council will open the public hearing, and then we'll come back, Mr. Freeman, if need be.
Mayor, so tonight, I brought several business owners and downtown enthusiasts with me. Is it okay if we do a stand-up in the essence of time?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you are here tonight in favor of the social district operating seven days a week in the Cool Spring Downtown District, and you're here, would you please stand up for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
May we have two speakers this evening in favor? Mr. Nate Coffey.
Good evening, Mr. Coffey.
Good evening, councilpeople and Mayor Colvin. As stated, I'm here to speak in favor of the social district being adopted in our downtown. And while many people will probably give you a couple of other data points for some reasoning as to moving forward with this, I'd like to give you just a little bit of a different spin on that. I'd like to tap into a group that sometimes you might not forget, because they may not vote for you, they may not necessarily be residents of this area, but we have this lovely base right next to us, Fort Bragg, that brings a lot to our economy. Over my years here, I've seen a lot of servicemen members that choose to spend a lot of their weekends and free time in other cities, cities other than Fayetteville, that they say they're getting more things to do and a lot more freedoms in these areas. Since North Carolina allowed the adoption of social districts, I've had personally in my business, an influx in clientele asking why they can enjoy this in other cities but not here. Activating the social district in this area gives them one more reason to stay in Fayetteville. I don't think that I need to really explain to you how much this can bolster our local economy. It helps grow not only our businesses, but our downtown and the city as well. I would like to request that this initiative not only run for a full seven days a week as opposed to two, but as well, I would like to ask that we would push that more than the six months that was requested. Speaking with a few other business owners in our area, we would really love to see this run for a full year. That gives us a full four seasons to go through. It allows us to get into the summer, we get to see how this works with the stadium, how the woodpeckers are able to like tap into this as well. And then that way, by late November, beginning of December next year, we'll be able to see a little bit more of how this worked, what worked, what didn't work, the kinks, having that time to be able to work that out. That being said, let's spend 2023 with the social district running seven days a week all year to benefit the city and the businesses through an experience our residents are looking for in other places, and we should be providing it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Molly Arnold.
Good evening, Ms. Arnold.
Molly Arnold, 227 Hayes Street. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all about the proposed social district and to urge you to give us a good run with it. You all fund the Cool Spring Downtown District to be an economic driver and to manage the upcoming arts and entertainment center that we hope to land downtown. And so I hope that you will take their recommendation as the experts in their field. I also hope that you will give it that 12-month run that we've all spoke about. The weekend is the weekend, right? Doesn't give you any good input on whether that's helpful or not, because if we're going to get anyone downtown, it's going to be on the weekend. It's those other days that matter to the small retail businesses. We're losing one next week, and we really can't stand to lose any more than we have to. So in an economic climate that occasionally can be challenging downtown, this is just a great potential driver for us. And so, again, if you all will please consider seven days a week and also the 12-month span, we really would appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, I'll close the public hearing. Did have a question. Saw a question. So just a question maybe for Mr. Freeman or Ms. Shonerman. Both options that you have recommended six months, but we've heard from business owners that 12 months would probably be more of a realistic metric. Why was there a six-month recommendation from you and staff?
We had a discussion with the police department and municipal staff a few weeks ago, following the first initial council meeting, and some city staff members and our staff felt like a six-month trial period would be a good way to sort of dip our toes in, in case we needed to make any tweaks. But when I initially came, I did come forward for 12 months. So I'm happy to support the 12-month request of our business owners.
Mr. Freeman?
She's correct.
Okay. Well, I wasn't verifying that.
Yeah.
Thought you had another version. All right. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Part of the reason too is that while we don't have a lot of experience with running this, this first one here, and as you know, we're already dealing with a lot of enforcement issues in the downtown. And so the idea was that we're not sure yet how many staff people it's going to take, what type of issues or problems we might have. And so it was kind of an ease-in approach that was sought, but of course, staff will follow council's direction. But that was the reason for the ease-in of six months for us to do an evaluation and to be able to calibrate the amount of staff and other departments to be able to support this safely and fully.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have, I have a question. First of all, I would like to commend you for listening to the business owners when they needed, they said a year. I think that that, I'm fully going to support that, because you do need the four seasons, and they are the ones that know, because that's their livelihood. So I'm going to ask an off-the-wall question, because I do go downtown on Sundays, and everybody knows that, you know, I like mimosa Sundays. And my question is, we change the law at 10 o'clock, so would it behoove us to do that for Sundays? Because I do know personally, when you go downtown on Sunday, it is packed. And, you know, that would, to me, would make sense for the restaurants to start it at 10 o'clock, maybe on the weekends, but especially on Sunday, because you're waiting. And if anybody has gone to the restaurants downtown for brunch, you are waiting. So I, I would like to know the answer to that question, if possible.
We certainly love the idea of proposing and expanding brunch culture in the Cool Spring Downtown District. So initially, the thought was to be consistent in our communication, but we do know that the municipality took steps several years ago to enact the brunch bill, so why not honor that on Sundays? So if we go six days a week, 12 to 10:00 p.m., but on Sundays, 10 to 10:00 p.m. then?
And I am, this is not my district, and I am very much supporting it, and I am going to, whenever the time comes. So whoever does make the motion, I didn't know if they would like to bring that in. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Alejandro.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, I've got Councilmember Ingram who's prepared. All right, Councilmember, any other question? Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. I do want to add, I want to thank the Cool Springs staff for their diligence in this, and the business owners' gauze to say, if it's not this, we're not participating. And that, that got, like even got me together. And so I wholeheartedly appreciate it. I remember in that meeting, I kept saying, well, why do we do this? And I wasn't getting it, and they were just like, no, we're not. And so I thank you. I'm seeing a lot of head nods here, which makes me feel good as a Sunday brunch goer and a weekday goer. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the creation of a temporary downtown social for 12 months, from December 2022 to December 2023, to operate seven days a week from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. After three months, CSDD will present a progress report of the impact to the city council, as I said, every three months. So March 2023 work session in June 2023 as well, and then so on and so forth. And then we will reintroduce the recent pilot in December 2023 and revisit whatever recommendations Cool Springs has at that point.
Mayor Colvin? All right. Yeah, so there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, as stated, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on the motion, had a question. Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, so Councilmember Ingram, you had said seven days a week from 12 to 10. We had discussed about the Sunday brunch. Were you interested in that or not?
I'm sorry, yes. Ms. Shonerman, what verbiage would you need me to add to include that?
That would be Monday through Saturday, 12 to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 10 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to my motion to include Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Ingram, as stated, to approve of the 12-month pilot, as stated with the terms described, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on the motion? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this item will require a second reading, so if the motion passes tonight, then this will be on your agenda for the 24th, on the consent agenda, just because it requires a second reading.
24th, 28th.
I'm sorry, 28th.
Gotcha. All right. Okay, understood. All right. If no further discussion, those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Well, you know, it's so sporadic, let's just get count real quick. All right, those opposed? All right, it's nine to one. Motion carries, Councilmember here voting in opposition.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and council will move to item 9.02. This is an item that we have, although it's listed under the public hearing, we've held the public hearing. Madam Clerk, what date was that previous public hearing?
October 24th.
All right, so public hearing has been held, council, so now it is before you for action. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Like you mentioned, there was a public hearing, no one showed up, and I hadn't received any phone calls regarding the rezoning, so I motion that we rezon this area from agriculture, residential to limited commercial.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin to approve the rezoning request, seconded by Councilmember Alejandro. All right, discussion on the motion? All right, council, y'all want to try iPads? All right, it's so late in the game. I'll look to you for your votes, those in favor. All right, motion carries by those voting. Nine to zero, Madam Clerk.
Ten to zero.
So it's 10 to zero, affirmative. All right, item 10.01, Parks and Rec Bond Cape Fear Park update. Is that Mr. Stone or Mrs. Gibson?
You got me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Got you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I am Rob Stone. I am the Capital Projects Construction Management Director, and we're here to talk tonight about the Cape Fear River Park, which is one of the last projects on the Parks and Rec Bond program. We have a consultant with us, I'll introduce him as soon as he steps back in, he was waiting for us very patiently. We, this, as I mentioned, this is the final project that we have to go into design phase. We've been developing a concept. We hired Moffett and Nichols, a consulting firm who is very talented consulting firm that has done this in a number of different places, looking at riverwalks, that type of thing, looking at water features for towns and cities as they move forward. I would like to stress, he's going to show us a really nice final plan for this area. We do not currently have the budget for all items that will be presented, I do want to stress that. But what they do allow us, as we have these projects, we'll move forward with the design to get to the point where we can put it out for bid, and at that time, we'll know exactly what our numbers are that we'll have in place, but we'll have some estimates at this, and we can talk about that toward the end. But what it does allow us, when we have these on-the-shelf, ready-to-go projects, if we happen to come across some initial funding, or happen to have some grants that we're able to apply for, Mr. Gibson is a magician, getting money, finding money in different places, and that'll give us the opportunity to move that forward if we have these ready to go. So I will give him just a second to get in, and I apologize, nature call just at the right side.
All right, understand.
Mr. Gibson's right there. Oh, I thought she was looking. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know Michael very well. Now, I would like to introduce, this is Steven Ramon, and he's with Moffett and Nickel, and I will turn it over to him to go through the presentation. Again, they have done a great job, and if you have any questions at the end, be sure to get it to us.
Good evening, sir.
My apologies. Thank you so much, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to present the Cape Fear River Park, Refined Master Plan Concept. We believe this is a great opportunity for the city. And really, this presentation serves two purposes. One, to present a long-term vision for the Cape Fear Riverfront Park, and two, identify an initial cost-effective first phase to advance into more detailed design and permitting. The project area is located along the Cape Fear River, anchoring the eastern end of the planning center city parks and trail system. It continues the already extensive parks and trail network within Fayetteville. The project area consists of 13.1 acres of city-owned property between Grove and Person Streets, along the west bank of the Cape Fear River. Over 1,000 feet of riverbank is included in the project, and this provides an extremely beneficial opportunity for activation, both passive and recreational, for the people of Fayetteville. Within the boundary, you can see the study area is highlighted in red. We have city-owned property, but we also have a series of out parcels, including the cell phone tower and the church parking lot. Church parking lot anchoring a large portion to the south end of the property. We anticipate this being something that can be refurbished and revitalized, in alignment with the other objectives of the plan. And we also see there's extreme potential for interaction and involvement with the botanical gardens and connectivity that can occur along the river edge. Existing conditions present opportunities and constraints. There is significant grade change, there is significant obstruction, both visually and accessible, to the riverfront. There is dense vegetation, there is drainage issues, there are issues of erosion and other such natural causes. The plan presents and tries to identify many of these aspects and challenges, and present opportunities for rehabilitation, preservation, and identify ways in which we can, we can bring this park and this environment back to its opportunities. Moffett-Nickle Planning Team, along with the city staff, have explored several preliminary options. I won't touch on the three that we kind of presented initially, but many of the kind of overarching elements include engaging the river. How can we do this from riverside trails, viewing areas, hand-powered recreational launching points? How can this become a terminus point for Cape Fear River Trail? How can we include active and passive recreational nodes, recreational trails, picnic areas, and the sort? Parking, accessibility, heritage zones, all many things that we can look at and define as continued evolution of the project, but many of the things that we have continued to include in early options and concepts, but also the preferred concept that we're presenting here today. Many of these things, as I've mentioned, you know, the images presented on the screen are precedent imagery. They're aspirational in quality of what we try to achieve here, and things that we think are accessible, and things that we can do here in this location. Edges, views, Cape Fear River, hand-powered recreational launching points, looping trails that both provide passive and active recreational opportunities for the people. And then there's opportunities for outdoor rooms and places of contemplation, whether it's educational, whether it's for places for people and communities and gathering points for annual or biannual events, places for people and communities and families to gather. As I mentioned, we explored three preliminary options, many of which similar kind of concepts and ideas, similar programmatic elements orchestrated in different ways in which we can start to look at how one option may create more accessibility to the water, one option that may create more accessibility to the botanical gardens, one that may be more forward-facing to the community and the streets surrounding it, all of which, the many aspects are interchangeable. But the preferred plan really, you know, centers on how can we create opportunities that open up the riverfront, and how can we create opportunities that allow people strong accessibility from all streets and neighboring connections, whether it's Grove Street, Broad Street, Person Street, whether it's from coming from botanical gardens or other points of interest. And so the plan presented on the screen, and I'll get into it in a little bit more detail, provides many great opportunities. To kind of walk you through a little bit of the south end of the park, two, we have a main entry point. We believe that the entry point is off the south, it provides great access, it provides great interaction with the parking that is shared with the church. Many of these aspects that we believe can be rehabilitated, reinvigorated with additional upkeep and maintenance, and we move through to a formal drop-off area. And I want to kind of walk you through a story or an experience of what someone may see as they approach this park, and something that they may, you know, encounter, because it's all about experience, it's all about creating an opportunity for the people to interact with the space, but it's also an opportunity for people to feel like this is a part of their community. We're met at a main arrival plaza, it may be a pavilion, an open-air pavilion for picnics, restrooms, concessions. People can interact, and they can go north, south, east, or west. If they go east, they go towards the riverfront. If they go west, they go towards a formal lawn, where we may have small events or public gatherings. The many trails and networks and connectivities that you can kind of see on the plan, whether it's formally paved trails, whether it's gravel path trails, they all provide interactions and opportunities for people to go in different directions, explore the site as they so choose. We believe that there's great opportunity for shoreline stabilization, we believe that there's great opportunity for We believe that there's great opportunity for riverfront float docking, whether it's for transient dockers or transient boaters coming to this location. We understand that there is significant grade change from the formal uplands area of the site, all the way down to the river and the water edge. And there, as I will kind of continue through the presentation, we identify many ways in which we could explore this. There's not one bill that fits everything. And again, these are ideas that we present today as suggestions and things that we could aspire to, but as we get into design and permitting and all the rigors of implementation, things will continue to evolve as they always do. The north side is a little less active. As I mentioned, we have formal areas of out parcels that we're dealing with and addressing the adjacency and the relationships of. We have future opportunities or future park areas. We have a connection or a Cape Fear River Trail that could potentially provide connections north of the site. All these things that we think are accessible long-term, that we try to identify in this plan and build into so that we can provide sustainability and flexibility in the plan to mold as demand or people in the community so desire. As I mentioned, there are many different ways in which we can address certain key nodes. For example, the riverfront amphitheater and floating dock section. As you can see, there is significant grade change across the site, and so how do we deal with that change and get people from a position that is of high elevation all the way down to a position that is interacting with the water and provides them with different modes of accessibility in public, active and passive recreation? We're providing amphitheaters with retaining walls and naturally graded steps that bring people down. We're trying to work with the environment rather than building hard infrastructure. And so, what this does is it allows for the environment and the ecosystem, the flora and fauna, to continue to survive and thrive in an environment that we're choosing to mold in a way that provides us with opportunities. As you can see, this is an elevation of the same section I presented. People are slowly transitioning down. This can be an opportunity for the city to hold events, civic, private, whatever so chooses, but larger gatherings or private gatherings. And I go back to the opportunities for education. We can bring communities and schools and neighboring colleges and environments into this space to interact with it. As a landscape architect myself, I understand the importance of addressing the environment, the idea of preservation and restoration, and working with the environment to elevate it to the next level. And so I'm sure there are many schools within the neighboring area that so too could address and have value added from an environment like this. Of importance, we understand that people need places to go and gather. Open-air picnic areas, for example, of something of this nature, are nodes within the environment off of the trail that have low impact. They are paved areas of vegetation that we have cleared to allow for gathering places, picnic benches, low-investment opportunities that can create high-yield opportunities for the people. Again, as you can see, a planned view of what that may entail, and something that may be presented in more of a section. Gathering area, something that's simple in nature but provides great opportunity. Covered picnic areas are also another way in which we can explore opportunities within the site. Something as simple as an open-air pavilion such as this, provides shelter, provides opportunities in all seasons. It provides gathering places for people. It provides gathering places or areas for outdoor dining, places in which the community can come and enjoy the site. And ultimately, I think we, you know, we continue to circle back to the idea of how can we get people to the water? And I think that wants to become one of those overarching elements of the design, and one that we believe that we've really begun to address in opening up the site so that people can get from the street to the water's edge. The water becomes an extremely invaluable resource, not only from a position of how people live, but also how people like to play. And so how do we continue to address that across that thousand-foot of linear riverfront edge? And there are different ways in which we do it. As we continue to go up, this would not be a seamless transition all the way up the edge, north to south, but it would be areas where we could create pockets, or enticing areas where people could transition down. Elevations and overlooks, opportunities for people to use hand-powered boats and other recreational opportunities. And so, in looking at all the plan and in looking at all the different ideas, we've provided what we consider to be an opinion of probable cost for this initial first long-term master plan. And I'll go back to the plan itself, so you can see it as its holistic form. The opinion of probable cost accounts for about $10 million, plus or minus. We understand that we need to work with the city, and this plan becomes a foundational element from which initial Phase 1 construction, design, implementation, technology, methods could be identified. We don't believe that the $10 million will be allocated in one large sum, but what this plan does is it provides a foundation from which the establishment of those initial phases can be developed, and they can be used to move forward with permitting and design. And the evolution of the plan can continue to unfold as we continue to work with the city and members of the public and the community at large to create a plan that is compelling and is one that the community so desire. As planners and designers, I always believe that we're not here to say what we need to do. We're here to provide opportunity, and we're here to provide recommendations, but ultimately, the success of a plan, or a park, or a city, or a community is in the hands of the people. So, we will be listeners, and we will be translators of community desire and things that the community want, but we believe that this is a foundational tool from which we can use to build and develop and establish next steps moving forward, which would be and include Phase 1 levels of implementation. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Great presentation. Do have a couple of questions. First one, where are you from?
I'm originally from Australia.
I told you. I told you he was Aussie. I told you.
A little betting on that.
I've been here about 10 years.
All right, all right. Go, Councilman, Mayor Protim, Doc.
Well, now I'm all flustered. Whereabouts in, I was just in Australia. Whereabouts in Australia?
I grew up in Melbourne, so southeast corner.
It's Melbourne and Sydney.
Melbourne and Sydney, yes, sir.
No D, I think, in Sydney. It's like Clinton has no T.
Yes, well, depending on who you speak to.
Yep, yep, I'm with you. Thank you. Excellent presentation. I don't think we got 10 million, but I think we got maybe five, and we might could find one more, so may have to do it in stages. The area is prone to flooding, so I appreciate you doing floating structures. That's very smart. I like the amphitheater idea. Maybe we don't go as big on the amphitheater possibly to save money. And then, does this include the Florida, the sunken, the breezes landing, the boat? Does Rob Stone might know, between the two bridges?
It's still shown in here, and there's no plans to remove it right now as part of this plan.
All right, okay. And then, you mentioned the church parking lot. What church were you talking about? So this is the church on Person Street?
Patsy Gabbol's Church.
Corner of Persons and North Broad Street.
It's there over.
Okay.
I've overflowed.
And we've had some discussions with them.
I know Mr. Gibson has had a few initial discussions.
Okay, excellent. No, that's great. I'm thrilled.
And we're not proposing that we're taking it over. We're proposing that we integrate it with the plant, and we resurface it and bring it, you know, to the same condition of the plant overall.
So we invest with it, and it stays their property?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, and then, it looks like a roundabout in there? Is that a roundabout, Mr.?
Yeah, at the formal entry of the park, it would be, you know, a formal drop-off. It would be a rotary, a roundabout, from which people with accessibility.
Right, in England, they call them roundabouts, and Australia, it's a rotary.
Absolutely.
That's right, all right.
So it could be a place where those with, you know, accessibility issues could be dropped off. Those members could then go and park their car, or if people wanted to go and drop off, you see the formal line at the end of it.
I love it. I love it. I love the rotary. It's a, is it a state-maintained road, Mr. Stone? I can't recall, or is it one?
Of course, it is, yes, sir.
Okay, so we got to get DOT to sign off.
The roundabout that you're referring to is?
Would be within the park.
Yeah, the one he was referring to is actually inside, internal. That was just a concept that is part of the initial, we haven't really opened those discussions yet for any type of roundabout on the street.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Did have a question before I go to Councilmember Jensen and Hendros. First option is, with these type of projects, do you foresee opportunity for public-private partnerships? So is anywhere that a private operator of any type of goods or service could fit into this model?
Yes and no. So it depends in which way the plan so chooses to go. I would imagine that the question is probably coming from a standpoint of how does this create economic value, or generate income, or something of that nature. There could be a contingency for a small sundry shop or a private organization to come in and support and fund and operate that location. More or less, the park and what's being proposed in this rendition is public property, so it's more designed for public active recreational environment and interaction. But as I mentioned, this is just a foundational tool, right? So, moving forward, as we so, you know, choose to engage the community and yourselves, we can discuss what else we want to incorporate and, you know, make adjustments and shifts as needed to facilitate that.
Right, well, reason I ask, I know most communities use their water as a drawing card or an additional amenity that attracts development of some type. So, you know, Greenville, South Carolina, the riverwalk that they have, you know, I know you have a lot of challenges with steep banks and elevations and that kind of thing, but they followed their walk with, you know, hotels and different things of where people wanted to be in and around water. So I'm wondering, was any of those concepts considered, and I know this is preliminary, but just are any of these areas billable that could possibly support either residential or some type of development around it?
So we didn't look into that far into it, Mayor, but that's definitely something we could examine in the future. Absolutely.
What's the total footprint of the area that you're using this?
It's 13.1 acres.
13?
Yes, .1.
Okay, all right.
So that accounts for, you know, if you take all the extents from Grove Street to North Broad Street and Person Street, it's greater, but once you take out the out parcels that we haven't designed on, it comes to 13.1.
All right, final question. Are there?
One thing before you move, Mayor, I did want to stress that right now, the current budget from the Bond project is 2.3 million.
All right, yeah, I know we've been dipping in and out of that pot, for sure.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I got you.
Doc said, fine, I want to make sure we clarify that.
Make that reality, huh? All right, and the final question is, are there resources for cleaning up the river, for dredging, for removing that, the ship that we talked about, you know? How do you start to look into, particularly with a new climate bill, resiliency, environmental conscious, you know, federal focus? Any opportunities for anything like that?
There's always opportunities for something like that. I think once you start to identify what those initial Phase 1 investment opportunities are, you know, I think as we've spoken, there's, you know, an initial 2.3 million in funding. You got to, the first steps are looking at site stabilization. How can we stabilize the creek edge? Is there issues with erosion? Is that impacting the water condition? Is it impacting the flora condition? And so, once you establish those, they're the foundational tools to any successful park, and you need to do those first and foremost before you start to do the harder infrastructure, the pavilions and the picnic areas, those things that sometimes bring people to the park, but we need to set the park up for the success. And so, there are certainly opportunities for that. There are grants out there that certainly can be explored, that do explore those opportunities for environmental and water protection, all of those things that are on the cards of things that, you know, we're looking at long-term. You know, as the plan continues to evolve, we'll continue to explore which grants may be more applicable, which initial phases may be more suitable for things like that you've just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen and Hendros and Ingram. Oh, I'm sorry, Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a few things. Yes, we are allocated, I think it's, what, 2.3, but I think we all know that the original allocation was 5 million, and I'm sure that we will make sure that that does happen. So what I do want to say is, yes, I am for doing a river park master plan, but there is a very uncomfortable conversation that needs to be talked about, and the mayor hit on it, is that, you know, the Cape Fear River is, in this area of the river, is not really nice to, you made it look very nice in this picture. It looks really nice in this picture. But we all know that it doesn't look like that, and we all know that there is Gen X in it. So I will say, we really need to make sure we do our homework on this ground before we start building on it and putting people on it. Now, I'm not trying to be like crazy about it, but when we did the multi-mobile center, it took us a lot of money to clean up that land. We got in it, and there was no turning back. So what I'm saying is, I think that we need to make sure that we do our homework very well on, to make sure that people are going to be able to be there and recreate. I love the idea, but being so close to the river, we need to have the awkward conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you put that on the last slide of the presentation?
Absolutely.
And forgive me, because when the numbers get past three or four digits, I start getting confused. So what is Moffett and Nichols, is your fee on there? Are you guys getting a flat fee, or is it a percentage?
So the fee that you see on the screen is purely for implementation and construction to get the plan that you saw on the screen prior to its full picture. You know, and this number is, again, preliminary, you know, that we have a contingency line item in there that brings the 7 million up to over 9 million, you know? And depending on when it is built, whether it's two, three years, that number will inflate. And so we need to account for that inflation and that cost of goods at that point in time. Or we may determine that there are many things in the plan that we, in two, three years, the community just don't want, or the city doesn't want, and so we can eliminate those and that price would fluctuate.
Where's the design fees? Is the design fee a flat fee, or is it a percentage of the gross?
That would be, that would be something that would need to be determined much later.
We have not, right now, we've engaged Moffett and Nickel for the concept, the high-level concept, so once we got to the point where we were comfortable with our programming, we would look at putting out an RFQ, which would request for qualifications, and I can't tell who would get it at that point, but, you know, we have some good qualified places. At that point, usually, it's usually about from 5 to 8% of the overall cost, usually.
Thank you. So then, previous slide, I think it's around 15, maybe? There was some picnic shelters? Yeah.
So there is an open-air picnic area, just with an assemblage of picnic tables and other sorts of components, and then there's a more formal covered area, something like this.
So I think in life, you know, a lot of things is timing, and we heard tonight, we have a need for shelter. I just don't think this is the, this is the type. So for me, the timing, I couldn't support this tonight, but thank you.
All right, Councilmember Benevente.
Will you be able to fish off the banks since a person will be able to get to the bank?
That is certainly something that can be explored. By bringing people to the water's edge, we can, you know, explore any modes of active recreational opportunities, whether it's hand-powered, motorized boating, fishing of sorts. I'm not sure what fish are in the river, but some people may choose to amenitize in that way, so that's certainly something that can be explored and something that can be accounted for in the plan.
You good, Councilmember? All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. So I first want to take a personal privilege and express how I am personally impacted by the Cape Fear River. As many of you know, I am a District 2 baby to my core. Many a days on the weekends, me and my dad will go out to the Cape Fear River, and we go fishing, pull the boat in. This is when there were no ramps, so we had to use the dirt path and hope to God we don't slip. But I thank my dad for these experiences, just being on the Cape Fear River, fishing with him, because at that time, I didn't fully appreciate it. I wanted to be home. But now seeing this in front of me, as now an elected leader of But now seeing this in front of me, as now an elected leader of District Two, I have a very, um, I'm very appreciative of this because I, once again, can see the equity in this and how more children like me will have these opportunities to get a better experience than what I had. Having ramps, having a place to sit, have lunch, have education less, lessons. So, thank you, Council, for moving this piece forward to even getting us to this part, to even see this, um, and be hopeful of this. I want to make a comment on some of the things that I heard. I have sometimes go have a conversation with some of our economic development partners in the city. And one, one of the most conversations that I remember was about this river park. And I said, uh, we were, I think we were talking about Minnesota, which I actually saw in here, the amphitheater. I said, "Well, how do we get something built out like this?" And I said, "I'm always hearing people concerned about it flooding, but do people even realize that if you design it correctly, it's okay if it floods? It's a river park, you know?" And, and they, they told me I was absolutely right. So one, it's okay if a river park floods, I'm getting ahead, not, thank you. Two, I don't think, I don't disagree on the comment of Gen X. I do think it's very serious and we do have to have a conversation, but I don't think we have to have it by ourselves. But people are still out there fishing and on the river. I hope they throw it back in the water. But I, I, they, they are still there because, one, that is an enhancement to that person's mental health, to be able to go out into that space and just be its water. People find comfort in that. And I wish, I wish we would have had this paired with the Makerspace because we have decided to move that, that forward, which is another awes- awesome project that presents equity to the city and its citizens. I was also questioning how, I guess the, and the mayor mentioned it, opportunity zones, but I don't want to use that term. So, public-private partnership. So the short answer of it is, is yes, we could do it. We would just have to give the direction to our economic development partners to say, "Hey, we have this master plan. Figure out how we compare the two," am I correct? Okay, thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Cape Fear River Park update as provided by the design firm Moffett Nickel and Nickel. Please forgive me if I pronounced that wrong. So the staff can move forward with developing a phase plan to meet the approved funding. And I will add, for new council members, because I was getting some questions, there was questions about why the funding was the way it was. In the past two to three years, the council had decided to pull funding from the river park to push it to other projects. So it is my hope that we can figure out how to move this forward without pulling more money from this. But if you're asking why, why the amount is the amount, that is why. Thank you.
Alright, and Councilmember Ingram. Alright, this motion on the floor by Councilmember Ingram is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Discussion on the motion to accept the river report. Those in favor, show of hands. Accept the new report, alright. Those opposed? Alright, so Madam Clerk, that's eight to two, those voted in opposition, Councilmember Benevente and Hondros. Alright, moving to item ten point oh two, Council. Thank, thank y'all. We'll look forward to a more in-depth discussion there, Mr. Stone. Uh, Councilors, we moved to ten point oh two. Uh, this is one of the two items that, uh, had in our work session that were brought back. I know that it's been a lot of, uh, research, there's been a lot of passion and a lot of discussion amongst council members regarding some, uh, compromised provisions or requirements that council had an interest in seeing. Reference to the ShotSpotter. I know that, uh, some of that, uh, information mentioned were, was to have, uh, public hearings. I think three public hearings were decided with the dates of December sixth, eighth, and ninth. Proposed dates for your consideration. Also, uh, one of those meetings, at least one of those meetings being, uh, in a remote capacity so that citizens could attend remotely. Also, uh, there were some modifications to, uh, some of the language of the contract. Uh, the goal tonight, Councilors, we, as we consider this item, is to possibly see if there can be some agreement that if certain provisions are met, uh, then can give, uh, permission for the city manager to, to perform an execution once it's verified that provisions are met. So with that, uh, Councilmember Benevente, you had a, a question or comment on this? Well, go with Councilmember Ingram first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to, I guess, ask, does this motion also talk about engaging a third party on behalf of the council to oversee the results of ShotSpotter?
Hadn't been made yet, but I know that came up in the conversation.
Okay, well, I'll wait until the motion is made to discuss my concerns.
Okay, Councilmember Benevente.
I make a motion that we do not proceed with executing a contract with ShotSpotter.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, this motion not proceed. Uh, seconded by, by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Uh, discussion on the motion, Councilmember Benevente.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. There has been a huge lack of transparency and accountability with regards to this new technology. I've asked the Chief of Police on several occasions during public meetings and in private to let me know the pros and the cons of this technology. Every single time, she's refused to answer. When we have so many of our neighbors coming up to us during the public forum asking about the lack of transparency and accountability, that's a prime example right there. When you can ask for two hundred thousand dollars a year to surveil our neighborhoods, specific neighborhoods, not all neighborhoods, and you cannot answer simple questions like what are the potential harms? That calls into question transparency and accountability. I'm the only council member who attended a meeting with the ShotSpotter representative today and I asked their representative to let me know some of the cons of this tech. And he let me know. He acknowledged that this tech has been misused, especially by communities who have a problem with their culture of policing. We here in Fayetteville, North Carolina undoubtedly have a problem with our culture of policing. So I'm not interested in creating more unnecessary interactions between Fayetteville police and young people that end up on the front page of The Observer. Everyone on City Council got an email from Brigadier General Gothard of the Science and Tech Division of the U.S. Army Special Operations Command, who told us plainly, "Do not execute this contract." This technology in particular is no longer being used overseas and companies like ShotSpotter are trying to hawk it to different municipalities across the country. Unfortunately, the kinds of crimes that we're seeing and the kind of gun violence that we have are not easily translatable to a sniper in the middle of a desert. The kinds of help that we need locally when it comes to improving human safety, reducing gun violence, are going to take investment into our community that brings people away from a lifestyle, that brings people out of poverty, not getting them caught up with more interactions with police. So ultimately, you heard it earlier from members of the community, we need a Department of Public Safety separate and apart from law enforcement and that's what I would rather see two hundred thousand dollars a year go towards.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I, as I shared earlier, uh, my concerns, um, with proceeding with the contract and I'm glad, will raise my hand to say initially, I was in support of ShotSpotter. I will not deny that I was in initial support. And then I started, uh, really honing in on the research and listening to some, uh, citizens and also hearing from, uh, elected officials in Durham and, um, which, which gave me some reservations. I did also express that I thought we kind of should, should hold up. But what, what troubled me the most about this was we are moving forward with, we are, we are, we may potentially move forward with a contract where we don't know anything about. We don't, we don't know the, we don't, we know what the pros are to its seller, but we don't know what the cons are to our citizens, um, and how it, it will impact them. The night after we voted to move this conversation forward, uh, Durham put a hold on theirs. Most of you know that Durham does have some significant crime issues. But however, and as I said earlier, people still decide to move there. But I think it would be in our best interest to revisit this conversation, maybe in a year and app, and see how other cities are being impacted by it and learn what that data tells us. And another piece is to move forward a contract for two hundred thousand dollars and also hire a third party to bring the data to us for something we don't know anything about, it, it just does not make sense. I was also made aware that ShotSpotter sent out robo-calls to citizens of Fayetteville, asking them to call their elected officials and support it. And when a council member on this board spoke to a resident, and they had an in-depth conversation about ShotSpotter, the resident felt that they had been, um, misinformed by ShotSpotter about the reasons why they should support it. And so I would, I would ask that you support not moving forward with this. Maybe we revisit it in a year after we learn what it's work doing with communities. And also recognize, we have a good license plate reader program that, that's, that works. I think we should continue to work with that, um, continue to, uh, support our community in addressing community safety, um, in all the ways that we can. But I do think it, it'd be in our best interest to revisit this later. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Alright, this motion on the floor by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Ingram to not move forward. So your vote will be in favor of denying, uh, the contract execution. Question, uh, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir. Mayor and, and Council, I thought that when we were in our six P.M. meeting, that we had a lot of great discussions about this item. But we were to, cons, were, the, the discussion was to consider supporting it with the conditions. And I was thinking that the conditions were going to be brought forward downstairs from, from upstairs by, by the maker of the motion, so now we're eliminating that altogether?
Well, the, the motion that was made, I just, I do recall the conversation, but the motion that was made on the floor is to not move forward and it's an unconditional no. So if this motion fails, then a subsequent motion. I know that Councilmember, uh, Jensen has, uh, indicated she wants to speak. We'll, we'll move forward with that. Discussion on the motion, Council, I, I, as, uh, as we look to wrap this up, just coming off the heels of an election, overwhelmingly, the citizens out of ninety-seven million dollars said sixty million dollars to public safety. Meaning that my safety, I feel strongly enough to pay more. Two-thirds of what was passed was allocated to public safety. And this is, I think we get lost or, or intentional, unintentional. This is not to the exclusion of anything else that we're doing. We're trying to do everything from oversight of the police department, we've done that, to community investments, to license plate readers, to gun buybacks, to anything it takes to satisfy the safety of this community. And the citizens said, "This is important to me." Two to one. So it's on the floor as a motion. After that, we'll, we'll take the necessary steps to, to move forward. But Councilmember Hare, you're right, uh, there was some discussion, but the motion is to deny, so. You have a comment, those in favor of the motion of denial, show of hands? Alright, those, uh, opposed to the motion, show of hands? Alright, so the motion, uh, those voting in favor is Councilmember Benevente, Banks McLaughlin, and Ingram. Motion fails three to seven. Those voting in opposition, Councilmember Hondros, McNair, Jensen, Colvin, Dawkins, uh, Hare, Thompson. Alright, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jensen.
Question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with what just happened, I would like to make a motion to approve the, I don't have it written in front of me, I'm sorry, um, to approve the ShotSpotter with having public forums on December sixth, December eighth, and December ninth. Once, once provisions are met, authorize the manager to execute when verified. Is that correct?
Uh, with amendments to the contract.
Amendment, sir?
Yeah, I, I, I would phrase it a little bit differently.
Hold, hold on, hold on, there, there's a, uh, there's, there's a motion on the floor, but she was getting clarity on it. Councilmember Hare, before we go to it, for a second, should, you had a question?
Yes, sir, I was hoping that we could put, um, that whatever conditions were retrieved out of those public forums and the information continued to come in from our police and others, that they be set as conditions, if they are approved, to be set as conditions along with what was just stated by, uh, Councilmember Jensen.
Yeah, I think what her motion was, and she was, she was trying to get, get clarity on it, was that there's a motion to consider authorizing the manager to sign it under the following conditions, which were three public hearings, there were some amendments to the contract, uh, language, as well as, um, I know it, the terms of it had a year's contract, but to allow, um, the manager, once conditions are verified, like we did earlier tonight, in one of the other items, it, it had the memorandum attached to the cam. And once those conditions are verified, that the council would authorize the manager's execution. So with that, Council, I think there are other questions, but I saw a second by Councilmember Hondros. Did I see, did I see it do like this? Alright, so with that, I have, uh, Councilmember Benevente and Banks McLaughlin.
And Ingram.
And Ingram, I'm sorry.
The way that the motion was phrased, I don't believe, uh, moves in the spirit of the discussion that was had prior. I think that we should have these public forums on the dates that the staff has identified. I think additionally, we can direct staff to negotiate unprecedented access to data collected in writing, uh, the language of which will be supplied by the end of business on Friday, uh, November eighteenth, and a third-party oversight staff of data collect, uh, to review data collected by this tech prior to considerations, uh, of any execution of this contract.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente, but, you know, you had an opportunity to make your motion.
Well, this is me, I'm using my, my time to speak.
Right.
So that would be the way to do it. I think anything less than that should, should fail.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram.
Okay, so, I'm, Madam Attorney, City Manager, help me out as it relates to ShotSpotter and what can and can't be done. Because I'm hearing that, that, that there is to be conditions from the public forum included in it, but I don't think it works like that. So theoretically speaking, we had an incident that, that occurred recently where, um, uh, I guess a gang detective officer went looking for somebody, found the young lady and said, "I hunt fugitives. This is what I heard, go down," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Gunshot detection says, this, this, there's a gunshot detect, detection in here. You are the only person in this area. You are now the suspect. That per, person probably has never owned a gun in the, a day in their life. But now they are a suspect because they was in the area at the time of the gunshot. But we are asking conditions to be set in place. And if a, if a, if a resident goes and says, "Well, if I'm at home and I hear something and I go outside and see what's going on, who's to say that they're going to take my word for it? Because what we've seen publicly just happened, how do we know that for sure?" We got to look at this in a holistic approach here. I would say if y'all are going to move this forward, hold off on the contract, have the, have the discussions with the citizens, bring that back, and then you make the decision on the contract. But based off of what we're dealing with publicly right now, it would be irresponsible.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Council, Councilmember Hondros, you had a question? Alright. All right, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin.
Thank you. As we talk about, excuse me, as we talk about wanting public to have some type of input, I think that needs to be the first steps we make. We need to have the public input before we do anything. It doesn't make sense to do a contract, amend a contract, if we do not have that public forum. So I think we need to have that public forum, then from there, depending on the results that we get from the community, then move forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council, just to repeat the motion on the floor, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the ShotSpotter with a public forums. We will have three public forums on December 6th, December 8th. December 9th, once provisions are met, authorize the manager to execute when verified.
All right, so there were three dates named, and I see the manager was kind of nodding about if those dates work for the public, but definitely the spirit of it is three dates.
Just three.
Public forums input, as well as contract modifications, as mentioned previous, and it was, what was the third option?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could be flexible on the dates, we reached out to them, and if you are going to talk about contract modifications, if you could specify those, that would help us as well.
So I will amend my motion to three available dates.
Okay, all right. So the motion on the floor is as stated, it was seconded by Councilmember Hondros, we've had discussion.
Question?
Okay.
Just one more question, because of clarity. And so according to what I'm understanding with this motion, after the three public forums, the public meetings, if all objectives are met, then there's a contract execution. Is that what I heard? Okay, then I can go for that.
Mayor Colvin, the city manager just had to be specific about the amendments. I didn't hear anything specific in that motion.
All right, so the motion on the floor is as stated, details and specifics of what entails in the contract were shared earlier today, which you said were going to be codified with an email. So that will come back to council. Right now is for the spirit of the process to either be moved or not, which is with the conditions. So it's an approval with conditions, with dates that will align with the public and with the staff's capability, but the proposed dates are December 6th, 8th, and 9th.
Put it on, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, look to you for your votes.
Put it on, Mr. Mayor. You just stated, no, you just stated, you just stated that something will be sent to us in the email?
I restated, I restated what the motion was about contract modifications. Specifics were not given of the modifications, but no contract has been executed. So tonight is to approve. Hold on one second, I was just restating the motion.
I didn't finish my question. So what I'm asking you is, you just stated that something will be sent to us in email about some type of-
I was repeating what Councilmember Benevente mentioned at dinner, that he had spoken to the vendor, and the vendor was sending some information.
Okay, so my next question would be, if the manager asked us to include that, something about that in the motion, how would that come to us in email afterwards?
The manager asks for the details of the contract modification before it's executed. That was what I understood.
Thank you.
All right. All right, counsel, we've discussed, show of hands.
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize. As I understand it, and I think what we're all trying to make sure we understand, is the motion as it is currently on the floor, there are no proposed amendments to the contract. Is that correct?
The specifics of the proposed amendment to the contract, Councilmember Jensen made the motion, Councilmember Hondros, so I'll ask again, your motion was repeated-
So there are no amendments to the contract. It is merely that we will have public input sessions before the contract is executed. Is that correct?
Is that correct? Is that correct, the way you understood it, sir?
And I would draw my second.
Okay, all right. All right, so Mayor Protem, second. So just for the sake of clarity, the motion on the floor is what?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the ShotSpotter with public forums stated at three dates, three dates for staff to decide. Once provisions are met, authorize the manager to execute when verified. Now.
All right. It's clear, it's motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Mayor Protem, as stated. Those in favor, show of hands, counsel? All right, those voting in favor is Councilmember McNair, Jensen, Colvin, Dawkins, and Hare, and Thompson. Those voting opposed, show of hands, Councilmember Benevente, Hondros, Banks, McLaughlin, and Ingram. Motion carries six-four. All right, counsel, item 10.03, appointment of PWC commission. Again, counsel, I know there was discussion in the work session about having possible interviews for the potential applicants. And so tonight, during the work session, we brought this forward to see, just kind of simply because it's stated in the work session, this was kind of in a neutral posture, and to move it forward, I know there was concern with having those who applied for the vacant chair, which expired a few months ago, to come in on an interview. So that is asked before you tonight, to either set that up, move it forward with the conditions of having interviews by those who've applied, or some other method. So you had a question, Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I was going to make a, and I'm still prepared to make a motion with some changes. If I remember correctly, what came up in the majority consensus was to hold off on making a nomination until the CEO of the PWC had been in place. That's what I remember where it kind of stopped. And if that is what I remember correctly-
That wasn't the motion that passed.
That wasn't the motion that passed?
It was the table, the item, but it didn't have any dates. And so therefore, it was stuck. And so there was some discussion about it. So in the work session, we had read the motions that were in the minutes from the meetings, and it was a consensus to bring it back to the night for discussion. But it was not until any dates specific.
Okay.
From my understanding, the current commission has hired a search firm, they are going through the process of doing what they do because they're the governance of that board, and you know, we appoint them with the confidence that they can handle that, as they did the first time.
Well, then, is it still possible to make a motion with the committee's recommendation and ask that that nominee not be sworn in until the CEO is in place?
I mean, whatever your pleasure is, so that is an option-
I'm trying to see which way we're trying to go.
That you could vote on one of the appointees, or some of the other discussion was that there would be kind of an interview process, so whatever counsel's pleasure. All right, questions on, or motions?
Well, I could make that motion, we can start it off right there.
All right, did you have a question, Councilmember Ingram? Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Councilmember Hare, if you wanted to make that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the Appointments Committee and nominate Mr. Christopher Davis and not to be installed until the CEO for the PWC, Public Works Commission, has been installed.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to move with the original-
Who's the nominee?
Christopher Davis.
With the original Appointments Committee recommendation of Christopher Davis, with the conditions as stated, to begin at the, I guess, hiring of the new chief executive. Any discussion on that motion? All right, counsel, those in favor, show of hands. Favor of that motion? All right, counsel, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, those opposed? All right, so Madam Clerk, that's five-five. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Hondros, Colvin, Dawkins, Hare, Thompson. Those voting opposed, Councilmembers Benevente, Banks, McLaughlin, McNair, Jensen, and Ingram. All right, so motion dies five-five. Okay, was there alternative counsel? You have people who've applied, we encourage people to apply. So if there is an opportunity to have them interview, we'll move to the next step, but I think at some point, you owe the public something.
So can I make a motion that we interview?
Second.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we can't just stop.
Right. I brought it back with this express purpose to move it forward, one way or another. All right, so if there's a motion to bring them in, as it did before-
To bring them in to interview.
Okay.
Because we said we're not accepting any more applications.
Right.
So we need to do, we need to move.
All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Jensen, that was seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on that, or clear on that, questions on that? All right, counsel, those in favor-
I do want to have a discussion on it, I'm so sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Ingram?
No, I do want to express-
Hold on, counsel, on that end, hold on, please.
I do want to express and just clarify something for Councilmember Hare, and then also, Councilmember Hare, to some point, you were correct about what you remember. And then also, if this moves forward, I do thank the council for going to the interview phase, because this is something that we establish that would be a part of the process. So thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Jensen, and I look forward to interviewing these candidates.
All right, thank you. All right, those in favor of the motion to go with interviews, show of hands? Yeah, question, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
Do we have a list? Can we read off the, what is it, eight?
Well, it was sent to our CAM. Did you need it read, or did you need it to know who it is?
No, can we mention those names?
Yeah, we'll have to find that. I don't know, is it on this attachment in the CAM?
Give me one second, I'll read it real quick. Yes, I have my book.
Uh, let's see. Yes, so Councilman Christopher Davis, Councilman, I mean, former Councilman Christopher Davis, Mr. William Gothard, Mr. Joseph Halascheck, Mr. Theodore Mohn, Mr. Peter Stewart, and Mr. Robert Voss. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, those in favor of the motion to interview, show of hand? All right, madam, those opposed?
I vote to have the-
Okay, all right.
The interviews.
All right, so motion carries eight, was it eight to two?
Nine to one.
All right, show of hands, those in favor, just so the clerk is clear, of the interviews. All right, those voting in favor, Hondros, Benevente, Banks, McLaughlin, McNair, Jensen, Colvin, Dawkins, Hare, and Ingram. Those opposed, Councilmember Thompson. All right, motion adjourned. Good job, counsel. See you next time.